All right, so we call this meeting to order. Okay, ready? Yep, it is 7:01. Okay. Let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a short invocation. We ask guidance in making fair and informed decisions as well as granting health and prosperity to the village of Leonard. You know? Okay. Okay. I guess I'll start with Rockland.
Okay.
Paul Almaranti.
Here.
Sherry Arsenal.
Here.
Debbie McDonald. Leslie McKenna.
Here.
Laurie Zellner.
Here.
Okay. Would you... would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second your motion. I have motion, not emotion. Okay. Let's see. Agenda approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to review the minutes from last month? I know Paul might want to look at that if he has any questions.
No, I've read through it.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 19 meeting?
Now, a second. Okay. Do you start the agenda with any audience business?
I'm not sure if I have any because I don't know what the agenda is.
Oh, I should turn off our...
Is the master plan on this tonight?
No. No, for public hearing or...
No, just in general.
Nothing, we're going to discuss about it.
Okay. I'd like to know if I can do it now.
Okay. Hold on, let's take it.
Let me just... just because I have to do the secretary notes. R-A-T-H-B-U-R-G, right?
R-A-T-H-B-U-R-G.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Nice to see you, by the way.
Thank you. Well, the last council meeting was a good one. People were getting interested now. I have a question for you, though. As you go through this master plan, have you asked the public for their opinion on anything in the master plan? Have you sent out a survey? I see what we want. I know that at the meeting with the Main Street group, after they heard what the people had to say, they wanted to get a survey done. So I wouldn't... I would like you not to continue completing the master plan until you know what the people want.
Well, we are publishing for June 19 of public hearing.
Yeah, but this should have been done in the beginning. You should always ask the public what they think about their community and what needs to be in the community and where it should be. And that's the very first thing that I think any master plan group should do. We are the people. You are just four people. We are all. 400 of us are the people, but yet you didn't ask our opinion on anything. And I think you should.
We'll take that under consideration and we'll pass that along and review that.
I will say that the meetings are always open.
They are, which is very true.
As the process that we've been working on over the past two years, working on the master plan, and thousands of man-hours have gone in, you know, from a lawyer that we've paid to another company that basically works on a lot of logistics. Because if you... because, Dave, I know that you're like a really informed guy. So I've looked at other places, master plans, like, you know, Village of Oxford and some of the others. And a lot of these, in a way, the nuts and bolts of them are very much the same as far as that goes. And I think we've left some... a lot of things open that we're not closing doors to change. What we're doing is just coming up with a basic foundation or structure for moving forward. Some of the things that we see that we would like to do. And we definitely put a lot of things in the back that if we do get a chance to see it, I think you're going to be really pleased because we're trying to really work with Main Street. And we're really trying to get a little bit more involved with them, doing more. And that's a really big part of us in the next master plan. Yeah, so, you know, because I don't want you to feel like, you know, that we're kind of making decisions for everybody because really, we're... it's a complete open door here. You know, that we really have been, you know, talking to people. I talk to people in the street. I ask them for their input, you know, and people are always welcome to come. And you've come before, and we've been glad to see you.
Well, when I was in charge of the park, when we first got the park, I made the motion to get the park and make the park. And the first thing we did was get us to make a survey to see what people want. What kind of park do you want? And that's... and going back to this again, you can say that it's open and people can come, but when you send something to somebody in the mail and they can look at it and spend some time looking at it, they might talk to other neighbors and say, "What do you think?" And before you know it, you might have some people actually saying something.
Well, we can look into whether or not the survey that's being conducted will include any of the information that would be pertinent to our master plan, too, or maybe we could add some questions to it.
Right, I think the nice thing about...
The other thing, I just wanted to put my two cents worth in into this. Our master plan was very, very, very outdated, the one that we have. We've been working on the current one for a couple of years. And we finally have a master plan that is current, much different in format and looks than the old master plan that we had before. One of the things that we've added in this master plan is a section called implementation. And it talks about all the different priority parts... that... priority projects for the village. And so, you know, we're trying to incorporate much more into the master plan. The plan that we had before was kind of one of those handigems. And it would get updated, but not a whole lot would change to be relevant with what's currently happening in the village. So this is a much more robust master plan that we've been working on. And we have made an attempt to, you know, address a lot of different concerns. And I think that, you know, there's always room for improvement. But we've, you know, we've listened to a lot of... a lot of folks and tried to do a really good job to address everything that we were made aware of.
And I think the blueprint that Main Street has given us and with our partnership with them has been so successful through so many communities. You know, if you look at what they've done for Rochester, being, I think, one of the greatest success examples, but, you know, all around Oakland County. And although our partnership with them is really small right now, if we can grow that, and it's going to take a lot to do it, it's going to take a lot of work just from the village council, from a lot of people here in the community. But if we can do that, changes will happen. But that's also kind of part of what the direction is that we're trying to go. So when you get a chance to see it, I think you'll see.
Well, I remember when the Main Street people were here and they were praising the mill and the trail and saying how well bringing business and bringing money to the village. Somebody had... was brave enough to actually stand up and say, "This is exactly where they're going to spend that money in this village. There's no place to spend it but sand and store. Why is that?" That's because our last master plan didn't allow for commercial growth. I think you got the copy of paperwork that I had at the meeting where it showed this planning commission, the chairman, asked the planning commission what they thought about. Because I guess Mr. Arbering was about to purchase the whole block and he wanted to make that a commercial block. And the decision by the planning commission was that that can't be done because the master plan didn't include any commercial growth. I gave you that exact copy.
Now, what does this date back to?
2003.
Okay, so this goes back some time ago.
That goes on the table, and I can't see it.
When was that submitted to whom? Because this, you know, yes, we are the planning commission, but I think it needs to go to the village council first. And then if they want us to get involved, then we will get involved. We take our direction from the village council. We're not a separate entity. We exist because they exist.
I'm not saying that you have any authority to do that, but...
Well, whatever, for whatever reason, the commercial property that they submitted, their application or wants and needs...
They didn't apply.
Well, then, we don't really need to discuss that.
A simple question. And the statement should have been something else, but it was, "We don't want any commercial growth in this town." That's what it says. What was her answer?
Number one, that was back in 2003. Number two, we do have... we do have zones in the village that are designated as commercial. If we didn't want any commercial growth, then we would not have areas designated as commercial.
Well, shortly after that, see, we were about to get a post office over there next, just south of the A-frame. You know what A-frame is? Okay. The post office chose that site to build. I looked in the soil survey map. I said, "It'll never happen." They pursued it, pursued it, and pursued it. I called the congressman out of New York. He was the subcommittee chairman for the postal service. I sent him some information about it. They tried to hurry up the project. This congressman, he was... he shut the project down, sent two federal agents, and they... postal attorney to me, and we talked for a while about lies and misleading information. They were trying to build a post office on a piece of swamp. And I eventually had to call the head of all 40,000 post offices in Washington, DC. And I said, "You're about to buy a piece of land that you will not be able to use." And I said, "Have you done a perp test?" And he said, "I don't know, but I'll find out." Well, just 10 minutes later, I had the head of the Great Lakes Region manager calling me. "Want to know the health department's number if they want to do a perp test to make it quicker."
I want to interject for a second.
Not just listen, I'm almost done.
Your time is almost up.
Well, yeah, you've got like thousands of things to do. Anyway, they did a... they didn't even do a perp test. They went in with the backlog. They did one scoop and quit. They said it was the worst perp test they've seen in a long, long time. And that's... that was eventually zone commercial. I'm going to tell you right now, not one bit of that land from the wood shop all the way halfway to South Street is ever going to be used for anything other than what it is. It's just not worthy. We don't have drainage to drain the water that's under it. There are so many things you don't know. But you'll go and do something. You haven't studied the soil, and that's the first thing you should be doing. That's the first thing that a post office should do.
You brought that towards our country. You brought that to the council's attention also. So thank you for bringing that up.
There's one more on expositives. I went into Rosie Drive today to see how they're doing. And they got... they got about all the houses they're going to get in there with soil that's acceptable to the town, with the yard that's acceptable soil. So that's good.
Well, when you... my experience with perp testing is you can perp test different parts of your parcel during different seasons. If you can pass during a different season, you can go on and build on the property if you maintain whatever specifications that they tell you you have to meet.
Here's something you're missing and you don't know. I just went through it. I just had to perp test them. And it doesn't matter what time of the season you go through it. There's striations of water that shows where the water table was at the highest point. And they can see it. I had my sanitaryian show it to me because I wanted to learn. And he said, "Well, here they are, right here." And it was down about four feet. That's as high as the water on the basis street got. Four feet was the highest. And it was a great perp test. He said, "It's really good. It's good sand. And all you got to do is raise the septic field up a foot," which I wanted to do so I could put in a walkout basement. So it wasn't any issue to me at all. You're not going to see that in a hundred very, very many places. There are some over in Rosie. And they've already done pretty much what they can do without sewers. So most of the town doesn't have that sand. You can look at these different numbers and take them around the town and see how much...
This is residential, so it doesn't have anything to do with...
No, I just wanted to show you how it's progressing for when they... when they approve that plan out there. I just... every so often, I go and see what's going on and how they're doing. And they've got one lot that's not built on, but it's sold. And they've got six, I think, that probably... it's in the spot that's white, and it probably will not be sold. But you need to be aware of this stuff so you can...
Well, you can have engineered septic field.
They can have engineered. That's... that's what we have on our street.
Well, you can. You cannot do it if that spot, your post office, no. No, the county will not let that be used for anything. Read the paperwork I gave you. You took it home. It talks about that seed with soil over there. It is just... it's number 19. It says the water table is either six inches above the ground in the worst part of the year or six inches below the ground. And that's... they went... they came in on the dry season and dug one scoop. It was most... they only went down three feet. They had enough. They said it was the most beautiful blue clay you've ever seen with water just gushing up.
I think everything has to be zoned something, you know what I'm saying? Is it developable or not, even with the commercial area? Even though, you know, it can't be maybe developed for that purposes right now unless something were changed, the parameters of the road, the speeds, the other things that we have that are considered what makes something commercial, commercial. But I think that, you know, getting back to, I think, your main focus and what's important to you is that we can do something with the area that we do have down here. And I know that's what you're looking at.
It's dark.
It may not always seem like, you know, there are so many priorities that have to be done on the budget that we have, but it's definitely something that we're focusing on. It isn't something that's been like backburnered or forgotten. It's been a big part of a lot of the conversations that we've had here. So I know when you get a chance to look at it when it's published, I think you'll see that, you know, we're trying to move forward.
Yeah, oh, I agree. I'm not against you guys at all.
You know what I'm trying to say, though. I think that I don't want you to feel like it's us trying to make decisions because, you know, for everybody, we're just trying to...
I really would like you to understand all the soils in Leonard first before you do anything else. You need to know what the soil is. Unless we're getting sewers. If we're getting sewers, then it doesn't matter. So I don't see that happening, but it could.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. To the next ordinance business. Village Council... no. Planning Commission business, our own business. We're going to take a look at the bylaws. And depending on the time later on, I'm just saying what we're going to be doing this. We might get a start on it. And we have to change our bylaws to reflect a five-person commission versus how it says it's a seven still in here. So it just requires some update on our... the legalese in the bylaws. So that's the planning commission business. There's no update on the Leonard Market shed project at the Leonard Market. It's still just in status quo. He passed his health inspections and... everything's good there. It's just the shed project is just standstill. The garage that burned down on Rochester Road, they put up a fence and they took it down then. Sherry lives closest. Do you have any update on the ongoing...
I really, you know, I know that they, you know, built in the back some additional structures, but my understanding was the village council had gotten involved and they were pursuing it through legal means. And so I think he must have gotten the letter and he did some cleanup. So we can follow up on that for next meeting. Let's see, oh, the strawberry festival is coming up next month. And they... moving on to the village council meeting update, they're closing the road on Strawberry Festival Day from...
July 21st.
July 21st from 1 to 5, I think, for the car racing and other traffic issues. Well, they closed Rochester Road...
For the parade.
For the parade. But then they opened up Rochester Road, and Leonard Road is closed.
Right.
For the day.
But the extended road closure is up the hill for the soapbox.
Oh.
Soapbox.
So it's a little...
I guess four hours.
Yeah, four hours of the go-around is kind of...
Okay, I didn't... I wasn't aware of this so fast.
We're actually having some struggles getting enough people to sign up. If we don't have enough to do a couple of good heats, we're just not going to have it this year. So the road closure will change and just stop here and not continue on. So we're coming up on a deadline for people to have their money in. So that may change again, but...
Because it was a big success last year.
It was, it was last year. But this year, we're just not getting as many people. Yeah, it's expensive to, you know, to do a part, but it's pretty cool.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the...
What you have to do is close the current meeting.
Yes.
And open.
Okay. No, you've helped me along, right? Okay, do I have to make a motion to close the current meeting of the planning commission? Someone can...
I'll support it.
Okay. So now we'll open the meeting for...
Public hearing.
Public hearing for...
724.
On the CBA.
The zoning board membership for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And what is a little synopsis of what it is really, the amendment is for is the Zoning Board of Appeals mirrors the village council in number of members, which used to be seven. And now it's been changed to five. So the Zoning Board of Appeals is also going to be five. So I'll just read the number of the change and I'll read the content of Section 1. The whole Section 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are the legal paragraphs that refer to the change. But that is all available for review in the village offices. So the amendment to ordinance 19, Section 24.02, membership of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Section 24.02 of ordinance 19 is amended to read as follows. Membership in the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is hereby established that the village council shall act as a zoning board of appeals pursuant to MCL 125.36012, Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MZEA, which shall be composed of five members. The term of each member shall be limited to the time they are members of the village council. The chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary of the board shall be elected annually by the members of the board. Successors in office shall be appointed not more than one month after the term of the preceding member has expired. All vacancies for unexpired terms shall be filled for the remainder of the term. A member of the board may be removed by the village council for misfeasance, malfeasance, or non-feasance in office upon written charges and after public hearing. A member shall disqualify himself or herself from a vote in which the member has a conflict of interest. Failure of a member to disqualify himself or herself from a vote in which the member has a conflict of interest constitutes malfeasance in office. So... I open the floor to the audience. Having no audience members to comment, I now open or invite comment from the planning commission if you have any comments or questions.
I have none. No, we've already discussed it before, so...
A motion to...
Change it from five to... from seven to five.
Correct.
So are we making a motion to adopt or are we making a motion to change it? Which one would it be?
It's... I think it's to pass it along to the village council for adoption. This ordinance was adopted as amendment to the Village of Leonard ordinance, number 19, by the village council. They're going to approve it. So we're making the... We're just holding the public hearing for comment.
Oh, okay.
There was none. The motion to change the zoning... change the ordinance 19...
Amend.
To amend. To amend. Ordinance 19, Section 24.01, membership of the Zoning Board of Appeals from seven to five.
Okay.
And that's basically, if you just restate this...
Okay, gotcha.
Is that.
Okay, so Paul made a motion to amend it. I'll second Paul's motion.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the vote was... okay.
Vote was all four, motion passes. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
That's... we're good. I love it.
Okay.
It's called teamwork.
Now you want to close, stop.
So now I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So now the procedure is to pass this to the village council. The village council will hold their adoption hearing on July 9, 2018. And it is being duly published in the Oxford Leader. Okay. I need to make a note here for myself. Okay, moving right along. The update to the master plan is... The status is I've given you each your copy. The last two paragraphs we changed. We've got, I don't know, probably two months. Look at the back, it's blank. I was thinking if everyone went to the strawberry festival, took some nice pictures, we could have a collage on the back. That's not anything that needs to be, like, major voted or...
Oh, we'll pick the pictures.
Okay. Does that mean if... Is that anything you're interested in?
There's been some nice additions due to...
Yeah, you know, the other thing is July 4th is coming up. And when they put up the flags on the poles in the village, that's a nice shot, you know, looking down Rochester Road one way or the other. Just see on the flag.
Good idea.
There's the strawberry festival.
It's like, that doesn't cost anything for me to print another page.
And like I said, you know... And like I said, you know, we get so many submissions to our Facebook page, just from like everybody. You know, people have been making some nice submissions too, so it isn't just all times us. So I appreciate that, just getting them in the public too that we can use.
If I was going to take my cover and draw, so if everyone came with one, two photos, anything you want to submit, it would be like photo, this area I'd put a square or something, a small photo, so it'd be like one, two, three. It'd be a mosaic, like Mc Mandrian style. I don't know if we put any words or not.
On the back?
Yeah, just the back. I just had two of them.
We could, we could put something, you know, um, is there anything that we could tie in with our objective, you know, to keep it rural?
Rural. The only, the only hesitancy is, is if we had photos, it doesn't really have to be majorly reapproved. I don't know if we put anything on the back that would be approved, you know what I mean? Like, content wise?
Yeah, because you know, we've got this, this piece at the beginning that says, you know, "Our community is committed to preserving the rural crossroads village appeal of our farming community, blending the past with the future."
We could restate that on the back, that would be-
You can hear this where you've got preserving the past and then you could put in the green box over here, embracing the future or something like that, or whatever, I don't know.
So preserving the past, embracing the, well, right here, it's right on the cover. "Our community is committed to maintaining the village crossroads field of our rural small town."
Yeah, it's a very ideal.
Yeah, there's room, you know. Okay, if that goes in this tiny box in the center, I don't know. I was going to try and just fill the whole page with pictures.
It would look so nice.
Yeah, you could do it like a collage, you know, that would be-
It's already just-
Because that can be our review, you know, our final review. I mean, if there's anything else to it, we have the opportunity because the festival's coming up and finally, I mean, I was out there struggling, taking pictures in the middle of fall and winter, so. Sounds good. So what happens next is the, by Monday I'm going to give everyone on the council their copy, having them reviewing it concurrently with the public. I may have to do, if there's any comments, that we decide as a council or the village council decides with their recommendations that we need to do some edits or changes. I plan on doing replacement pages.
I'm sorry, so if they receive it by Monday, what's the timeline that they would be giving us their edits?
It depends on the lawyer now. He's got the language for writing the public notice.
Okay, so the lawyer, I just want to get this through. So they're receiving on Monday and the lawyer is in the process of-
Scheduling, yeah, the clerk and the legal are getting the language in order for the public hearing.
Get on anything.
It probably has its own language, two-page legalese that has to be approved the same way the ordinance changes have to happen. We haven't done this in so long, we don't even know what the process is. So it may not, our public hearing is tentatively scheduled for July 19th, but we may not make that date. It's based on other things that have to happen first. So then, if we're not going to make that date, we'll just either review the bylaws, then review them on our own at home, come with our recommendations at the next meeting. But there's two things in the bylaws that are incorrect. So as, with our new ordinances, we have to update our bylaws. So, let's see.
Can you please take the binder off?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
How long?
No, it's, it's fine.
Sorry.
They did kind of set it on there.
Sorry, I should know better. So any other questions on the master plan?
So it was July 19th, was that a tentative date?
It's, yes.
For public hearing.
Right, if the law-
If the lawyer gets-
Gets the language back to Cindy in time to get it to the Oxford Leader and it gets published with the required amount of days prior to-
Okay, it's just been so long in the making, it's just like, oh my gosh, is it finally going to be done?
Yeah.
Is it really going to happen? I don't know what to do.
Right.
All right.
So we will have our meeting next time. It may be a public hearing, it may not.
Okay, well, it could not, so what work to do?
We're getting there.
All right.
So, and then the village council would have to get back to us with their comments. And they, you know, get some time with it too. They probably get to at least after the public hearing.
Okay.
Or we could take the public's recommendations and then pass those recommendations on to the village council. But I was going to try to do a combo.
I can see why, just with so many hours you put into it, that it could be just redundant, you know?
It's like take it all at once.
Right.
Shoot it back out all at once.
Exactly.
Because it may be another review process or it may just pass.
Okay.
So the bylaws. We started last week, I mean, last meeting, talking about the fact that it still says seven members for five. And we were required, we were required in changing the bylaws to say that we were going to change the bylaws one meeting prior to attempting to change the bylaws. So we did that at the last meeting.
Right.
But I don't think anybody got a chance to review them altogether anyways. Now we could sit here and read them and go through it and just make our edits altogether.
Okay. Do you want to do that just to get it done? Because we've been so inundated with this that I know we still spent time on it.
Right, we did a little bit.
For the most part, I know the need of it, I think we know where we're at with it, so if everybody's okay with it.
I'm okay with it, it's still early. This is the last thing unless we have any issue.
And if you're trying to read, one of us, are we reading on our own or are we reading aloud?
We have to share. He has one, she has one, but we only have one to share, so. While you start to read this, I'm going to, I've read it recently, it's through once. There's something in this document that I've got to find that applies to that. I didn't circle it.
All right. My front page of the-
Can I add some of this? Yes.
The only thing, one thing that pops out is the quorum.
Okay, so which section?
Article five.
Article four, section four.
Section five.
Section five, quorum. Four members of the commission, now it is three, so that is, that is one of the changes.
Well, there's, on the first page, article three, members, section one. Planning commission shall be composed of five members. It's currently saying seven.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and then I don't know how we change the terms of office because what they did was based on a seven-member quorum. Or a seven-member commission. Okay?
So I don't think that would affect, how would, how if you think that would affect like the terms?
Okay, the term of office of each member of the planning commission shall be three years. The terms shall be staggered so that only two or three members are appointed or reappointed each year.
Okay, I see.
Okay?
Probably still would work.
That probably still would work.
I mean, a lot of times what happens is when, when one thing is vacant, another thing is just full, you know what I mean? So sometimes it's staggered, sometimes it's not, ideally, right?
Yeah, ideally it would be that way.
Yeah, but it doesn't always-
We could have a sentence where- Yeah, we did.
Yeah, because it would work.
We were staggered by maybe one month.
You came in and worked it for me or something like that, yeah. I'm assuming whether, because the language is reasonably feasible, basically what they're saying, it's a guideline, not a rule. This is kind of like, we would ideally like it this way, but it may not happen this way because the same thing, we don't really work with a vice chair either. You know, so just-
Oh, we could change that.
Because they do say-
Yes, I was proposing that too.
Reasonably feasible, so they're not saying it has to be, so I don't know if we need to change the language because of that.
Well, if reasonably feasible, doesn't that cover it?
I think it covers.
I did say it covers it.
It does, so that way you don't have to change it because you've got it.
Yeah, if reasonably feasible, that's resignation though.
Right, but that could be added to. I didn't know where that ended and another one started, but if it has to be inserted, I would just use it.
You've been on the council longer. In fact, I need to mention that Phyllis thought that this was already done, that no one could find the electronic copy or paper copy where it was revised. So maybe, it may be it was done in practice but not done officially. This document is dated 2008. Were you on the council in 2008?
I was.
Do you remember changing it?
I remember modifying it back in 2008.
To this, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I believe that's right around the time when Pauline Blanca retired from the planning commission.
Okay.
It was either during or right after that we went through this process. You know, and all we did basically, I think it was because of some public act that had come into play where it caused us to then take a look at the bylaws.
And did I overlook that part of the language that was on there before of us, that we should replace ourselves? Because I don't, I don't know if that's the best of the practice or-
We didn't get, we didn't get that document till well after we were on the commission already.
Right, because I was thinking-
So I wouldn't hold you accountable for something you didn't know when you signed up.
Oh, no, I don't mean that. I just mean the fact that I don't know that that's a good plan. I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's right.
Is that, is that in these bylaws?
I thought I read it when we had our last meeting.
Yeah, let's see, yeah.
But when I looked back over it, but I was-
I, I remember that too when I was shot.
Maybe I haven't gotten to it yet because I find that just unsettling and I don't think it's right, you know?
No, how do you get volunteers to?
Well, it's not even that, I don't know what I think is a suitable replacement for myself. The rest of you may not agree with. And then if it's in here, then you guys can't override it, you're just kind of stuck with it. Okay, so.
Right there.
Where? Let's see. That a vacancy exists and request, oh, okay, that's an appointment as successor, so that's different than what I had seen before.
Why did we say that? Because I thought I had read that also.
Maybe I haven't gotten to it yet. It's not there.
Was I to the point of removing disorderly or disruptive persons? Or was I just patient and listening?
Well, we, you know, we put the flag out there letting them know there's a time limit and I think that worked out well.
I think we'll address some things in the planning commissioners' questions and concerns.
Is that something that can be added to the bylaws? That a certain, one individual has a certain amount of time or cannot-
No, I don't think so.
You just assigned us to?
No, I, well, I think we'll address it in a minute. I like to let everyone say their piece, but wordiness.
See, one of the things that we currently don't note-
In our minutes or in the-
In our minutes, that according to the bylaws, it says, "A minute book shall be kept posted to date in which shall be recorded the commission's proceedings, showing attendance and all absences with indications as to whether absences were excused or unexcused by the chairperson." So in other words, when Debbie is absent tonight, it should have a notation of absence approved by chairperson. Do you know what I'm saying? Because apparently that is something that needs to appear in our meeting minutes.
So when I do the roll call and somebody's absent, are you saying every meeting I need to find out? Like, so should I say, like, for example, if Debbie's absent, that is this approved by you, Leslie, or not? Because you just can't, you have to make a roll, so I'm curious.
Right, they know, like, as planning commission members, we know that if we're going to not be here, we're supposed to-
Tell, yeah.
Inform. And when Leslie sends out the notification that they're coming, she asks us, you know, to say whether we're going to be there or not.
Right, so she knows if we have a quorum. So that's your last chance to say if you're coming or not, is what you're saying?
Give me a chance to cancel the meeting. If one of you others were not coming, we would have had a problem.
If you didn't-
I would have held a public meeting with two people, even though we didn't have a quorum, and I would have took the consequences afterwards.
Right, because we had, it was a public hearing.
Right.
You know, so, you know.
She only texted me half an hour before the meeting, said she wasn't feeling well. The last meeting, I would say it was unexcused. She said, I didn't know there was a meeting and we've, we all knew there was a meeting.
Okay, so does that excuse, does that, you know, I'm going to let that go.
Yeah, and that's in the past. I'm just saying, as long as we're reviewing this and, you know, we're catching some stuff, we should try to remember to do this moving forward, you know? Because it's, it's one of those things.
So what is, what constitutes an approved excuse?
That's what I would, that's what I would wonder, just being, we both just saw her. But I'm just saying, I don't want to be that way, but I-
Are we a little more casual than that? I think so.
Well, I think the whole thing of it is, is just, you know, she'll just have to be aware that she needs to be at the next meeting.
Because it's her third time.
Correct, that's all. I mean, I appreciate everyone's efforts. Being here and doing this and making the community better.
We're kind of soft on that.
Right, and I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's just that rather than not showing up at all with no call, you know, that a call has been made.
Right, okay.
You know.
Call has been made.
To let the commission or know that the person is not going to be able to attend, period, that's it.
Okay, so now I just feel we're so lucky that we get attendance.
You know, you know, we only, after this is done- You know, you know, we only, after this is done, we're only gonna have four meetings a year.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is just, you know, I think that we all need to make an effort just to be at the four meetings a year. I think, you know, because if somebody's on the planning commission and we only have four meetings and they miss three, then that's problematic. We've had a lot of meetings.
Right.
You know, so it is what it is. We've had, because some of these meetings have been really long.
They have been.
So, you know, if she's not feeling tip-top, I can totally understand why maybe she didn't want to be here.
Right.
So, I think just moving forward was...
Take it, I don't know. Do you have a recommendation on changing the verbiage?
No, I, I think the verbiage, I think the verbiage is fine. What I am recommending is that when we are taking attendance, when someone is not here, you would be the one to, you know, say that, you know, you've got a call.
Right, I got a call, but she wasn't...
If you got a call, then that's a good thing. You know, I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill, it's just we don't, or we haven't been following protocol.
We haven't.
And this is the most we've met as a commission in a long time. Because typically we would go months without meeting.
Correct.
It was like a seasonal thing. I'll see you, winter, spring, summer, and fall.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, is it, Paul, did you, um, correct the quorum?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. I remembered section five, but I was fuzzy. Says here generally two or three absences in a row are grounds for removal from an appointed position like the, uh, planning commission. These were, uh...
And when we used to meet four times a year, I can see how that, like, like I said, we've been meeting pretty regularly, so, you know? You're an authoritarian.
Sometimes. Sometimes I like to rule as a team. A team makes your job, uh, more pleasant and a lot easier. It's like small little ball up the hill, real big ball. The more people pushing it, the easier it is. So I just thought it was a good opportunity, since we had to change for the five to seven, that we just kind of glanced at it.
Yeah, and, you know, it's been such a long time since...
Still ten years.
I looked at these, you know, it all makes sense to me how we come up with this consistent, you know, call of order, verification, roll call, the termination of quorum, you know? Yeah. I mean, we leave some of that out, but, um, it gives us a good idea on how to...
We changed the order of this today. You know, at least they were done.
We must have had an old copy, so I'm happy to say that this, this is, I'm not finding what we had seen before anywhere. I didn't see it.
Maybe that was in, uh, some other document, but not even this.
You know what, maybe at least, yeah, it had to have been somewhere else. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, since I have this electronically, I could go ahead. I'd like to, I'd like to share your stuff. Just make the notations on here. Then at the next meeting, we could ratify it, or we could ratify it now with changes that are noted. Let's write a, a motion. I need to get that back where it is. Can we, let's look back at last month's, uh, what we wrote, we did, how we worded it. Right here, motion to amend, to begin the process of amending the bylaws and rules of procedures, planning commission, Article thirteen, section one, to reflect a five-member commission versus a seven-member commission. So now, we would just, uh, motion to amend.
Now, are we, okay, once again, I'm sorry to get confused, but, because we have made the motion to amend, are we adopting?
We had to, we had to make the motion to make the changes one meeting prior to making the changes.
Okay.
There had to be a motion to make the changes.
So, so this was...
That was required, so changing your bylaws.
Okay.
It was written in here when we were reading.
Yes, I was just saying, now is it a motion to amend or a motion to adopt was my question?
The last meeting that you...
Because we said to amend last, and so what do you think?
So, we should go ahead and...
Adopt?
Adopt.
Okay. Make the cha, motion to make the changes as stated and motion to adopt. You can make it, do it in one motion.
Do it all, yeah.
Okay.
Got a motion to make changes and adopt.
Okay, because we already, okay, very good. So, so far, uh, we have paid, I'll wait till Sherry's done. She's my, uh, left-hand, right-hand woman. I got, I got two of them here.
Oh, she's the, she's the meticulous one on that.
Oh, I appreciate the, um, the fluffiness.
Oh, it says here, "All members shall hold office until their successors are appointed."
Okay, that's different than what we had before, so that's perfect, that's what we want.
Well...
Because that's saying somebody's going to, that, that means the...
Appoint somebody.
Right, or what we had before was, we've seen one about us finding our own replacement, remember that?
Right, yes.
I think that was an old document.
Okay.
So...
It's not in here, though?
It's not there, so, like, how Phyllis said, there was two things floating around or something.
Okay.
What was that again? Read the...
Um, it says, "All members shall hold office until their successors are appointed."
That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, if you want to be out...
If somebody wants to leave, they're gonna leave.
Exactly, and you're just gonna be absent two or three times, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how valid that is, because it's contradictory.
Not gonna force somebody to stay there.
Yeah, I think it's an attempt to, um, you know, if it's in writing and if it's part of the bylaws, it's an attempt to get somebody who is leaving to potentially stay longer until their successor is appointed. You know, because otherwise then...
Depends on the reason for leaving.
A lot of truth to that.
Should, all members should try to remain, I mean, do you want to change it? I'm not changing it, because it is contradictory, as if you're absent three times, you're out, you know? So, we could just cross that out.
No, well, that's a good idea. Terms should be staggered or reappointed each year. All members shall hold office until their successors aren't appointed. See, it would be different if we had a large, people standing in line, people that wanted to serve on the planning commission. And we wouldn't be nitpicking these little details.
Right. How about a rotating basis? Everybody rotates chairman for a, a year, and then you just rotate.
Oh, boy, that'd be a mistake.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we're making a motion, correct?
Okay, so this is what I've got.
Okay.
So, uh...
My secretary's drawing it.
Perk up your ears, Sherry, because you're my, you're my little legal eagle here, okay? What, what I think we've got here is, so, um, somebody is going to make a motion to make changes to Article thirteen, section one, and adopt the previous motion from April nineteenth, twenty eighteen, to reflect a five-member commission versus a seven-member commission.
Okay, um, let's not be so specific, because we made changes to Article three, section one, and we also made changes to a different section. You could say, and...
So, should I put the subsections in here, not just section one, I should put Article thirteen, section...
Yeah, let's do that.
And then list the sections that the changes are going to be made.
And, let's see, like, the, uh...
So, because we're, we're making changes. Sorry for my writing.
Article... Oh, well, here's, I'd say, motion to make changes to, and, and make it say, bylaws and rules of procedures for the village of Leonard Planning Commission. Because that's really what we're changing.
You know, I had that first, and I crossed it out. I should have just gone with my...
That was the broader statement.
That was my original statement.
Then, uh...
And then get rid of this Article thirteen, section one.
Right, well, that could be later listed as where, which ones we change.
Okay.
Pertaining to the content.
Okay, all right, so, somebody's going to make a motion to make changes to the bylaws and rules of procedures and adopt the previous motion from April to reflect, uh, a five-member commission versus a seven-member commission?
I second it.
Okay, so, no, no, I actually didn't make the motion, but I'll, um...
I'll make the motion, but I need to be able to read your end right.
I know, I'm in love with that. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, you can tweak it.
To reflect the, um...
To make?
Uh, five-member and, um, the, the reduction of a quorum.
Yes.
To agree with that number.
Oh, that's right, that's on the...
Reduction of a quorum from two... Four to three.
Right, that's real specific, that's much better.
Okay. Okay, so, um, now let's talk about which pages it affects, so I get the document right when I fix it. Uh, page one. Page one. Page... Well, I was gonna talk about the, uh, section one election. Annually at the April meeting held each calendar year, the commission shall elect a chairperson. We do not have a vice-chairperson anymore. So this isn't the accurate...
Could it put to, to elect a chairperson and officers? And then, at some point, if, if we were ever deciding to go back to the vice chair, that we would be able to do that?
I don't know.
In the meantime, we're not keeping to what's saying there, so if you just said officers, it's just, just more general.
Then they talk about succession of vice-chairmen, I mean, we don't, we're not in compliance right now.
Right, exactly, that section we have to...
When I was on the commission under Phyllis, was there, uh, I mean, you were here, I wasn't. Who was vice-chairman? There wasn't one then either?
No. No. There's always been, you know, basically, a chairperson...
And a secretary.
And a secretary, but, um... Oh, let me ask, I think in the beginning, there was always a chairperson, but over time, we no longer identified someone as, um, a vice-chair.
Um, is there a vice, Paul, is there a vice-chair on the village council?
There's a pro town, president pro town.
And who's that?
Uh, let me think, it used to be me, but not...
Is it Hoffman?
Sharpe.
Sharpe? And what is, is that basically the vice chair?
They don't do anything, you don't do anything until the president doesn't come in, then you take, take over as the president. So if he's gonna be on vacation or somewhere, then you handle him until he gets back.
Okay, is this, should he be appointed, is that by Mike's, because I know that when we did the election, she was, uh, whatever you call her, she was something else on the ballot that he voted for, whatever you call her.
She was a village trustee.
Trustee, that's what I'm looking for, so she's the trustee, but she's the pro town.
The pro town, it's added on, like, when I was pro town, uh, Mike came over and asked me if I would do that, and I said, okay.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
And then he announced it at the meeting, and I was pro town.
Gotcha.
And I, I had to take two meetings in about three years that I actually ran the meetings, and otherwise, Mike was here.
Well, I don't even really know if we're allowed to remove a vice-chairperson from the bylaws.
I don't, can we just, is it, are we allowed to leave it, the language as it is then?
We could.
I think we should.
Just put one feasible in there.
One, one feasible.
That's gonna be my, my statement for everything.
I think we should leave it as it is.
Yeah, I think so too. I think we're just getting into the, we're getting into the mud here.
Okay.
If we open that Pandora's box up, let's leave it.
Stat. All right, so no changes on page two?
I was only underlining it because I was happy.
No, I'm thinking, uh, I think this, yeah, okay.
I didn't underline it.
So page four, from four to three?
So, now, do I have to state that it's gonna be Article five, section five for that? Do I have to be that specific in the language?
I would say, just all like, no, I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
I think that just the, those are the changes.
It just gets, yeah, okay.
It's, we're changing, we're making two changes, we're changing it from five in the quorum, that's it.
Okay.
And wherever that is reflected throughout the document is how I would couch it.
All right, good.
Okay, so... Proof that the village Leonard Planning Commission, um, so I should have had a page prepared for us to sign like this?
Well, no, because the next meeting, when it's official and the changes have been made, you'll sign it, and then somebody will sign it. So, because this is just a motion, so we're good.
About what we're...
To adopt, so we...
We're adopting and then we'll approve it, is that what?
There you go.
Okay, adopt and then approve.
Or approve, we'll, you know, uh, changes to be approved at the next meeting or something. But we'll just know that we're gonna do it.
Sign, yes, okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, after you see it finalized, then you can...
We'll sign it, we'll be corrected and signed at the next meeting.
Can't sign something that is...
Got it. Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, make amendments to the bylaws and rules of procedure for the village of Leonard Planning Commission, uh, to, uh, correct, to reflect the changes in ordinance nineteen that our council is only a five-member, uh, planning commission, where our bylaws used to say that they were seven. So, uh, which includes the reduction of the quorum from four to three.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
All in favor, we need to, we need to vote on that?
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote, so let's...
Yes.
Sherry?
Is this ordinance nineteen?
No.
Okay, scratch the ordinance nineteen thing then. Is it even an ordinance? It's just our bylaws.
It's just bylaws.
Okay.
Correct.
Sherry?
Sherry? Are you a yes?
Oh, yes, what's your vote?
Leslie? Lori, yes. Oh, motion passes.
Okay. All in favor, motion passes. Okay. Now, moving right along, I'll give this to you, you can word that to the, you know...
Yeah.
To your heart's desire. And, um, uh... We'll move on to any comments about anything tonight? Uh, my only one is, uh...
Question.
Question is, to be answered.
You circled a couple things on that other paper.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I must open that motion and change it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, um, this is, um, what chairpersons are responsible for, and, and Mike sent me this, it says that, uh, I gotta go back a page. When someone submits something like for building permits or housing, any kind of changes in the community at the clerk's office, the clerks reviews it for check and completeness to their ability, and the zoning or building official, uh, checks it, the clerk and chairperson should agree on who will make notifications to appropriate officials. The chairperson should receive an application... And the chairperson should receive an application and check to see if all the requirements of the zoning ordinance are satisfied.
Oh, has that ever happened?
I, you know, this might have happened, and, um, Mike might have done it for the shed applications and any of this, but it says, "The application is to be given to the PC members for the review. This should be at least 10 days before the meeting. The planning commission bylaws should speak to this. If they don't, it should be revised."
Okay, well, that is an issue, because he did just start the work without anybody's authorization, and I think that's what, the problems that came in later, that I don't know...
Where does this even pertain to the bylaws in here? About building and...
I just didn't get the correlation. Oh, like, do we have to make a new subsection, do you mean? Like, to it, like, add a section somewhere where, you know how we've got, like, Section 2 severability, Section 3? I'm looking at the other one, but would one be the other?
This would be for, like, site planning or rezoning. So new business, uh, is to be, new business submitted to the village is required to be considered by the planning commission. The village council may also direct the planning commission to attend to some business that they will direct. In most communities, it means that when an application is submitted to the clerk's office...
Right.
Who makes the notification official? And the chairperson should receive the notification. So what it speaks to is, is any new business in the community needs to be given to the planning commission 10 days prior to a meeting. So that's got to be stated in there somewhere.
He means the village clerk and the PC and recording secretary, so the village...
That's right, yeah.
So, um, clerk subject to the revisions of the zoning ordinance, these rules, um, and the direction that the commission and its chair and clerk shall within the... Tend to all correspondence of the commission.
So it should be added in that paragraph if it's not here. That's where it goes.
Mm-hmm, and with the clerk. And so would that be an item? You know how this is Item A and this is Item B? Is it just an add-on to Item A?
I think it's an add-on to Item A.
All right.
We're on page three, if you need to...
Under Section 4, duties of a village clerk and recording secretary?
Right, because this is speaking directly to what the clerk is notifying the chairperson to do.
Okay.
So, so, um, all this is required. To coordinate all matters to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance and these rules. And then, at the end here, boom! Provide documentation... Let me see if I can write it out. Provide... ...tation to PC... ...members.
Members or chairperson?
Uh, no, it's, it's, the chairperson has to... The clerk? Okay, this is the clerk. Yep, got it. Okay, so it says applications?
Yes.
No case shall become before the commission unless it shall be filed with the clerk at least 15 days prior to the next regularly scheduled commission meeting. Except, this rule shall not apply to matters scheduled for special meetings. Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk no less than 10 days prior to the planning commission meetings at which such plans are to be reviewed.
Right, but it...
It says, it speaks to it, but we need to, the application is given to all PC members for their review needs to be added. Or does it speak to that already? Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk no less than 10 days prior to the planning commission meetings at which such plans are to be reviewed.
Right, but that doesn't say that I gave it to Sherri and Lori to review. So it needs one more sentence to...
Can I see something?
Sure, because are we talking about site plans here, or are we talking about something else?
This was, um, it starts, uh... Applications to the clerk office for...
Application for what, is the question?
Well, it was site plans and zoning applications.
Okay, so we could add zoning applications to where it says section?
In there? Did you see where Sherri was?
Let's take a look at that and see if that would work.
See, no case, so that would be, that would cover it.
Okay, all right, okay.
But, um, what this doesn't say is, is that the planning...
Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk no less than 10 days.
But that's not, that's not me giving it to you guys to review.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's what he's saying, is that...
I'm checking, I got you now.
So it would be added on here. You're right, Sherri. Good catch. Okay, so, site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk and made available to the commission members no less than 10 days prior to the planning commission meetings at which such...
That's fine.
Plans are to be reviewed.
Just add right in here. Here it is. Okay, so I just wanted to put, I just wanted to put where it was. I'm just going to do this because this is convoluted, and I'm going to get messed up. I don't know where I am.
Oh, we could give you, uh, maybe Paul can give you his copy if you need it.
No, that's okay. That's all right.
I'm going to need this to change.
Okay. Oh, then maybe I will have to bug him for a second.
You can have my copy.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, if you guys don't mind.
It doesn't matter who's...
That's fine.
Okay, I mean, if you want to take a look at it, I can always scan it and email it to you.
I can email it too. Want it, I'll email it. Yeah, you probably have it. It was in one of our emails. It was a group email. It was, uh, about a year ago, a group email from Mike. The bylaws, we have them.
Oh.
I found it in a...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, I knew I had read this.
Right.
And I couldn't find it.
Right.
I was looking in the wrong place. Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk. So you want to add right here, clerk and passed to the chair? How did you want to? Um, submitted, submitted to the clerk and provided to the planning commission members. Okay. No less than 10 days prior. Because that's what he's saying in the email.
Right.
You know, that it's not just that it's 10 days before a meeting. It's got to be, we need 10 days before the meeting to take a look at it.
You want to add that on your plate? Well, yeah, I didn't think it would fit, and now I see how you did it.
Okay. Thanks, Sherri.
Sure.
I look at this stuff and... It's a lot of info.
It is, and that's why there's more than five people...
Yes.
That's why.
That's right, you got it. It's a group effort, it truly is.
Oh, this is yours. That I, this is yours, I messed up.
That's okay. No problem. As long as you got a whole page. All right, so now the motion just includes that also.
Okay. Um, and, hold on, I'll have to...
Okay, so do we want to revisit the motion?
Sure. We'll just re-vote. Okay. All right, let me just, uh, change the signature.
Make sure we got it right?
Yep.
Because we had, um, ordinance 19 in there.
I'm sorry, yeah. No ordinance 19.
Isn't this all in, in? I was calling today's public hearing the private roads for, in my brain.
I, you know...
I need to do the same thing.
I was going through, um, a lot of the paperwork in here, you know, that I, you know, stashed in the old man's land.
That's what she was going to say.
And I ran across private roads, and for a minute, it was in my brain that that was what the public hearing was about. And then, when you said something about the reduction in numbers, I'm, oh, yeah, I remember, yeah, that was an email at Leslie's.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend the bylaws and rules of procedures for the planning commission of the Village of Leonard. To reflect the member count from prior seven to five, member commission, uh, which would also include the reduction of a quorum from four to three. And we also, uh, are adding the sentence...
Language.
The language.
Language.
We're adding the language. Let's add this here. Added, "Language..."
To Article 11.
To Article... Sorry, if you can read my writing, to 11? Is it I, I?
X1. X is 10, 1 is 11.
X1. Otherwise known as 11. Get that? And the sentence is, "To be added," uh, that the clerk will provide...
How about sentence amended to be, and then state what the sentence is going to be? Because we're just adding, we're not... Site plans submitted to, submitted to clerk and planning commission members.
Okay. Site plans submitted to clerk and planning commission's members.
Whoa. Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk and planning commission members no less than 10 days prior to the planning commission meetings. She's saying which such plans are to be reviewed.
Got it. We'll take the whole sentence.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it really is not in context, and it needs to be in context.
Got it. Thank you, Sherri. Reduction of quorum from four to three. Added the language of, "Site plans shall be revised and submitted to the clerk and provided to the PC members no less than 10 days prior to the planning commission meetings at which such plans are to be reviewed." Can we get...
I'll second your motion.
You said the same thing you did before?
It is.
Okay. And vote, Paul? Sherri?
Yes.
Leslie, aye? Lori?
Yes.
Aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye? Debbie's absent. All in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. This one's yours, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know how much of this I got of yours. Do you have page five?
You have the whole thing.
Okay.
And this is the one that Paul's given.
Okay. So, um, my only concern, if I'm moving on now to planning commissioners' questions and concerns, um, my concern is, um, the soil, uh, and sewer issue, uh, has been brought up to us now twice, and the plant, the village council meeting has gone over it twice. Is there any comments other than the fact that, uh, when someone purchases property, they go into it knowing what they're purchasing? If there's improvements to be made on said property, landlords, or homeowners, or property owners, um, have to do their research and get their perk tests, get their, um...
Everyone needs to do their due diligence, and I think, you know, I appreciate what Dave had to say, and I know he's very passionate about trying to make this village better, and I think that's something that we all want. And I don't mean to steal your thunder, but I think that...
Nope, that's what I'm asking.
The point was, I think he was getting hung up in the soil, and not so much in what our job is, which is, regardless of what it was, we still have to zone something, something.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? And that's what comes down to. And it can move forward from there, because we're just going to make a plan to make a better community, to add some sidewalks, all the things that we wanted to do.
Right.
And I don't think that we want to get the cart ahead of the horse, which is, we have some short-term goals that we've all kind of decided as a community with the village council and in open meetings on a regular basis to move forward on some of these things, and then make some wish list plans with Oakland County to move forward.
The, um, concern is, we've, all the land in Leonard is zoned. His right as a resident is to bring any rezoning, uh, requests to our attention. Our, the village, if it has the tax base to support a sewer system, we would have to research that and get into that. At this time, our village does not have the resources to support the sewer system. So, um, I guess we will continue to hear his concerns, but I just wanted to address it from the fact that, uh, you know, if, if, there's still ways that Leonard can proceed to improve and go forward. There's still places that can be built, and businesses can be opened, and we're an open community for all, uh, future development.
Right. Um, I think that we should make the village council aware that Dave was here this evening, you know, um, and again, approach the issue about, um, the soil, um, in the village with a particular, um, interest in the commercial, uh... The areas that are zoned commercial, and the fact that they appear to be very wet.
Back down by, uh, the elementary school, there's a commercial that's buildable. And, um, obviously, Cooper Standard has invested in our community, as well as the new, uh, antique store, who took a residence and turned it into, you know, part for residence, part probably commercial, but, uh, those are all things moving forward. There is an issue down with the new road, uh, renewal, that down by where, uh, the old train station was, is flooding, and the trains not working properly, so, um, I'm trying to get that looked at. But that's it. I can make a motion, if anyone has no other questions, concerns, can motion to adjourn.
I'll second your motion. It's, uh, 8:28. Hooray!
How's it going for the all-in-favor say aye?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?